Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is called "The Order." Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you so much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you so much. That makes me turn to item number four, meeting minutes. Tonight will be assisted by council member Garland. Council member Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for A1.
It's been moved by council member Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by council member Navarro. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with council member Chin absent. Next up, we have item 4B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Council member Garland?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the board commission and committee meeting minutes for B1 to 4B2.
It's been moved by council member Garland and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with council member Chin absent. Next up, I have a number of announcements that I will come down to read. All right. Got a number of these this evening, a number of proclamations. So the first one I have here is item 5A1, the Kid Zone Mayor Awards Presentation. The mayor's office of the Tempe City Council are invested in honoring outstanding children in our community and adults who help provide quality care and education for those children. Tonight, we are proud to honor and recognize those children and adults because of their outstanding participation in the Kid Zone enrichment programs. Kid Zone is an award-winning, state-accredited, school-age enrichment program administered by the city of Tempe in cooperation with the Tempe Elementary School District. It offers an exciting, safe place for students from preschool through eighth grade where they may interact with their friends while they participate in enrichment activities and develop new interests after school. Kid Zone could not have provided these services without the help and support of some outstanding school partners from the Tempe Elementary District. While there are too many to mention this evening, there are three we'd like to particularly recognize. The dedicated school partners we honor tonight are individuals who demonstrate cooperation, mutual respect, and knowledge of the importance of quality, out-of-time school enrichment. They understand the significant learning that still takes place before and after the school bell rings. Their support exemplifies how cooperation between the city and the school district can work at the highest level to make exceptional programming available to students at each school. So I'd like to now invite three folks to please come down as soon as I announce your name. The first person is the principal at Aradondo Elementary School, Allison Bruning-Hamady. Next up, the school office assistant at Fuller Elementary School, Joanna Olson. And custodian at Scales Technology Academy, Kaja Moon. Council, you want to be far and do? I was thinking, look, I always have to have, when I've got a governing board member from Tempe Union on the board, I got to make sure that she and the other council members are invited. So come on down, folks. See, she knows everyone. Don't. So I'm going to do this here. Just want to note, too, the next up we have here, the 28 students we're going to recognize tonight represent over 1,300 children enrolled in Kid Zone this past year. They were selected by the Kid Zone staff because of quite a few attributes: their kind and respectful attitude towards other children and staff, their initiative and enthusiastic positive participation, and their display of cooperation, good sportsmanship, responsibility, and leadership. So we now like to direct your attention to the screens here for a slideshow recognizing Kid Zone's outstanding students. Who could not be happy after watching that? So congratulations to all the folks recognized this evening, which brings me to item 5A2, which is the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week proclamation. And I see the clerk staff here in front. Do you want to come on forward? Come on, come with me. Kara. So this proclamation reads, it's like you're all scared of me. Like, don't get too close to him. I promise I bathed. My goodness. All right, so this proclamation reads, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 5th through May 11th, 2024 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Tempe, Arizona. All right. Next up, item 5A3, National Peace Officer Memorial and National Police Week Proclamation. I see Chief McCoy. If you and any members of your team would like to join us down here, please feel free. All right. So this proclamation reads, they're laughing at me again because I'm so short that I can never be seen. I know, no, it's okay. It's fine. Let's go ahead. It's fine. No, it's okay. It's all good. You're, you know, you're not to blame for my genetics. So this proclamation reads, whereas as a nation, we honor the memory and sacrifice of fallen law enforcement officers during Peace Officer Memorial Week so dedicated by President John F. Kennedy in 1962; and whereas Tempe police officers and their families are members of our community striving to earn trust, build partnerships, and keep the peace, protect lives, safety, and property, uphold the U.S. Constitution, and respect the rights of all those with whom we engage; and whereas Tempe police responded to 151,000 total calls for service in 2023, which is approximately 12,500 calls each month; and whereas since the first known line-of-duty death in 1791, over 23,000 law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice according to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund; and whereas the safety and quality of life of our community depends in great measure on the dedication, capability, compassion, and daily service of our Tempe police officers. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 9th through the 18th, 2024 as National Peace Officer Memorial and National Police Week in Tempe, Arizona. Next up, item 5A4, National League of Cities 100th Anniversary Proclamation. And do I have our chief of staff, Tanya Chavez, here? Yep, you're on the, you're on my list. She's like, me? I'm like, yes, you. Come on down. Actually, you know what I should probably do as well? How about, you know, Jonathan Shuffield, you want to come down as well? Come on down. Jonathan is our, is our sort of new-ish now government relations officer, and Tanya is our chief of staff of the city. So this proclamation reads, whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly; and whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country; and whereas the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations; and whereas as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation; and whereas the city of Tempe is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments; and whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world; and whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history; and whereas the city of Tempe was first incorporated in 1894 and is proudly served today by Mayor Corey Woods, Vice Mayor Jennifer Adams, Councilmember Joel Navarro, Councilmember Randy Keating, Councilmember Doreen Garland, Councilmember Arlene Chin, and Councilmember Berdeta Hodge, and a municipal workforce of 2,231 dedicated public servants. Now therefore, in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary, the city of Tempe hereby proclaims May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in Tempe, Arizona. The last proclamation I have this evening is item 5A5, which is the Arizona Heat Awareness Week Proclamation. So I know some folks accepting this this evening are from the Tempe Church of Christ, Arizona Faith Network, Community Health and Human Services Department, Sustainability and Resilience Department, and representatives from the Tempe Police Department. So if anyone who would like to join me can come on down. Chief, welcome back. All right. So this proclamation reads, whereas the city of Tempe joins the Arizona Department of Health Services and Maricopa County Public Health in recognizing Arizona Heat Awareness Week with education, awareness, and actions to take around hydration and preparedness for extreme heat; and whereas Tempe, along with the greater metropolitan region, is expected to experience multiple days of 110-degree temperatures this summer, and these extreme, these levels of extreme heat have disproportionate negative effects on our community; and whereas heat-related deaths increased 52% in 2023 compared to 2022; and whereas the city of Tempe is preparing this summer with nine heat relief locations, all of which allow any individual to come to hydrate and seek respite from the summer sun, and if needed, get connected to shelter and social services; and whereas departments across the city work collaboratively on responding to extreme heat, including Community Health and Human Services, Tempe Police Department, Tempe Fire and Medical Rescue, Community Services, Sustainability and Resilience Office, and Risk Management; and whereas these departments also work with external partners, including Tempe Resilience Hubs, faith-based institutions, Arizona Faith Network, and passionate local businesses and residents; and whereas the city of Tempe asks its residents, businesses, and organizations to prepare their families, friends, colleagues, and neighbors to get educated and prepared for the extreme heat season and consider the city of Tempe as a partner and resource to help mitigate vulnerabilities to this threat. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 6th through May 10th, 2024 as Arizona Heat Awareness Week in Tempe, Arizona. Right. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. That concludes my reports and announcements this evening. I'm going to turn to item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, as this is National Teachers Appreciation Week, I thought it would be fitting to talk about Zeta Johnson. Zeta Johnson was acknowledged this past week at the Tempe Diablo's Excellence in Education event. I can't think of a better person to acknowledge, so thank you Diablo's for all the service and acknowledging this great woman. Zeta, I can go on and on about her, her resume, but she was, served on the school board for many years as president, as a, as a noble servant. She was a Don Carlos recipient, award recipient. She's championed children, families, women in strong positions. I met Zeta in 2002 when I stepped into the role of Diversity Director. She was on the Human Relations Commission, and I was a staff. And she always looked to mentor everyone around her. I think about the mark and what the legacy she has left in this, in this city as an educator, as a community member, and two passions that she had: serving this community well, families, and serving and loving her family passionately. The gentleman you see right there in the middle next to me is Penn Johnson, who she was married to for 62 years. She passed over a year ago, but I believe, though she may be physically gone, her spirit and impact endure inspiring generations to come. So thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge Zeta Johnson.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Appreciate it. Wonderful, wonderful woman, absolute Tempe legend. All right. That brings me to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. Just as a quick note here, I've got a couple of items, items 7C1, which is actually on the consent agenda, which I will be pulling off separately, so I want to make folks know that there are going to be people who, I know a lot of people are going to be speaking on that item, so don't think that I'm skipping you if I'm waiting till that item comes up in the agenda. I will pull it separately so you can talk. And then I know we have plenty of people here for item 8C4, and so you'll have the opportunity to speak when that item comes up as well. So just wanted to make sure I noted that for the record. So with that said, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any other public appearance? If so, please get my attention. All right. See, now I'll close that portion of the hearing, and I will move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the consent agenda is listed as miscellaneous, items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, items of Bids and Contracts, Items 7B1 through 7B7, and Resolutions, Items 7C1 through 7C9. Quick note, Mr. City Attorney, am I allowed to pull any item, or would a council member need to pull that item? Just to make sure I'm doing things according to how I should be doing.
Mayor, certainly within your prerogative as a member of the--
Okay, sounds good. All right. Okay, sounds good. Then I will, then I will pull myself and Vice Mayor Adams. Item 7C1 will be removed for separate consideration off the Consent Agenda. Is there any, once again, I want to note too, that any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, I will move on then. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items--
Some of--
Hold on, hold on. With, with Items 7A1 through 7A6, Awards of Bids and Contracts, 7B1 through 7B7, and Resolutions, Items 7C1 through 7C9, with Item 7C1 being removed for separate consideration. It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Chin absent. That turns, makes me turn here to Item 7C1. Give me one quick second here. And that item is to adopt a resolution authorizing city staff to prepare and file a declaratory action to determine the rights and obligations of various parties and property owners with respect to a certain bridle path easement in the Shady Lane Estates subdivision. This was removed by myself and Vice Mayor Adams for a separate consideration. Before I call up people, and once again, I will call all the cards in the order in which I received them this evening. I wanted to see if I could turn to Mr. Anderson, our City Attorney, for just a quick explanation about what this item is, not legal advice, but just explaining exactly what this is to the public here and for those who might be watching at home.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item concerns a bridle path easement that was designated on a plat recorded in the 1990s, and I believe it was the Shady Lane Estates. That plat did not designate who the holder of the easement was. This has been an issue for several years now for the city. I'm getting the hand sign of four years, and there's confusion. There's a number of parties that are potentially interested in easement, and there's also diametrically opposed viewpoints as to, between the property owner of the city and as well as some of the neighboring property owners. In light of the circumstances and the lack of clarity, the recommendation from the City's Office, City Attorney's Office was, was to ask the Superior Court as the appropriate jurisdiction for that matter to make a declaratory statement as to what the rights and interests are, so this matter could be resolved formally as it should be as a property interest dispute.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney. All right, with that said, I'm going to go on and start calling the cards in the order in which I received them this evening. The first speaker I have is Stanley Nickpon. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stanley Nickpon. I live at 1307 East Cuyahoga Cabos in South Tempe. We're coming up for the fourth anniversary of this issue. And up until about a couple of days ago, I felt that we're getting pretty close to some closure, but having read 7C1 on your agenda, I'm not, I'm not so sure that's going to happen. Adopting this resolution authorizing staff to file for declaratory action by someone, someone else is very disappointing to me. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, making a decision on the wall issue is your responsibility, and putting it off to someone else makes no sense. And a couple of years ago, by the way, you guys, the council, voted seven to zero in favor to enforce the code stipulations restrictions to remove the wall, which ironically was placed on top of the major water line that goes to Cuyahoga Cabos. Then for some explained reason, the council backed off. So I'm asking to please, you vote against, please vote against 7C1. Caucus and review all the facts, then vote on the wall removal, up or down, one way or the other. And in so doing, please remember that it's our Tempe.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shelley Leptich. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Shelley Root Leptich at 1441 East Cuyahoga Cabos. I wanted to speak because I am one of two original owners in Cuyahoga Cabos that built in the 60s. My parents built because I loved horses, and it was a wonderful rural area. And as other houses have come around, what was nice about Cuyahoga Cabos was I had bridle paths that I could ride in with my five children, my 18 grandchildren, and I hope someday my great-grandchildren. And even though it's busy out there in the roads, it's like a little bit of heaven to ride in this community. And I ride now, I ride almost every day, and I go behind Shady Lane, and those trees that I used to get the, drink the water and have the shade are cut down. And this fence is included into my bridle path. And we, we ask you to help us. This is a unique way of life. I am the animal lady that has the llamas and the alpacas and the horses, and people come by every day to see my animals because it's a rural area and they love it. And that's why we built there. And I hope you'll listen to our pleas because we don't have a high-priced attorney. We keep our dues really low for the people who live in there, and we can't afford it. We call upon you for help, that we might be able to keep this way of life, and that one man will not be able to intrude on our unique way of life, and that thou hear our pleas because we don't know what else to do. And we hope that you will listen to us and that you will help us in this time. And I'm thankful that you could listen to us, and I say this in name, I was going to say in the name of my Lord, Jesus Christ.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Jackie Beals. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jackie Beals. I live at 1620 East Citation, and my husband and I have lived there for over 30 years. Reason why we moved there is to have space and land. And I feel like I'm a very law-abiding citizen, and I respect the law. It's frustrating to me when people do not respect the law, and I feel like perhaps this is what has occurred with a homeowner that lives at 1710 East Carver. It's my understanding, he was told that he cannot put up the wall, but he put it up anyway. And that's, that is such a, such an affront to my respect of the law, all right? And now it appears, as was already mentioned, that you folks on the City Council did say that the wall had to come down, but then you backtracked. Did you backtrack because you're afraid of legal issues? I know the homeowner probably has deep pockets, deeper pockets than we do as homeowners, and no one likes to be sued, but we have to follow the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have this evening is Kimberly Caliendo. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Caliendo. I reside at 1318 East Secretariat Drive, Tempe. We raised our kids in the same area. My kids went to school with Doreen's kids and Joel's kids. My concern is that if this is allowed to continue, if the wall stays up, now it's a precedence. Everyone in Shady Lane that backs up to the, to the bridle path can now take up their easement because, well, we've set a precedent, somebody else got away with it. Let's just keep going. Eventually, it will erode the entire equestrian feel of our neighborhood. So I, I'm appealing to all of you to make sure you vote against this, especially people from our neighborhood. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is John Caliendo. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
John Caliendo, 1318 East Secretariat as well. So we all live in this community to have the room and the space and to enjoy the, the easements and the property. Not only was this wall put up, it was put up on the opposite side of a really nice set of trees, and then now those trees have been taken down. So not only should the wall be removed, but the tree should be put back, it should be put back up. By passing what you're looking at resolution-wise, you're just passing the buck. It is your responsibility to stick with this and stay with it, it's not somebody else's responsibility. Once you've made that decision to have someone else look at it, then you've made that decision that you're no longer going to support the people of Tempe. Okay? To me, I watch a lot of movies, a lot of old westerns. This isn't the old days. You can't just steal property. You can't just take over somebody else's land and make a decision that it's yours. There's no squatters rights on this. Nobody should own that property. That property is the easement, it should remain the easement. And it's up to you to help support this community, and most of the people in that community have lived there for many, many years, and we expected it to stay that way. Turn down that resolution, there's no reason to do it, step by your guns, and do what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Susie Edwards. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Susan Edwards. I live at 1024 East Buena Vista Drive. I appreciate the acknowledgement of Tempe's stewardship responsibilities for Native America lands that was presented at the start of this meeting. Towards that end, I encourage this council to vote no on Resolution 7C as fencing in more public land for private use, as a residence in Shady, as a resident in Shady Lane illegally did with the public bridle path, is not in keeping with the express stewardship of Native lands by this council. Further, a Shady Lane resident is allowed to prevail. This sets precedent for bordering communities like mine, for residents to also ignore Tempe code and move their own fences out to capture public land for private use. In my case, if I were to follow Shady Lane residents' land grab, I could increase my backyard in the Buena Vista Ranches by 3,500 square feet. However, unlike the owner of Lot 7 in Shady Lane, I believe in keeping our wonderful and unique bridle path intact for everyone to enjoy, not for my own personal enrichment. All City Council members took an oath to uphold and enforce the laws and codes of Tempe. This would include the plat map registered in 1995 that explicitly sets the boundaries of the bridle path in question. Consequently, I would urge the City Council to vote no on 7C and not kick the can down the bridle path for the courts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is David Mitchellson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is David Mitchellson at 1529 East Cuyahoga Cabos, Tempe, Arizona. Mayor, council, thank you for giving me the time to speak today. Yesterday, I sent you documents related to a previous easement issue from 2010 on Lot 16 of the Cuyahoga Cabos Association, also known as CDC. The City of Tempe acted and enforced the city code in 2010 on Lot 16 as if the easement is a public easement. The power and the authority of the City of Tempe issued ordinance 2010.12, which I have right here. Therefore, as clearly demonstrated in 2010, the city can enforce city code and preserve and protect the Shady Lane easement as described on the plat for the public. In 1961, Cuyahoga Cabos was formed as described by the plat map 97-33. It includes bridle path easements on the property. These easements were not enclosed or obstructed as to restrict the free use and enjoyment of the public for equine activities. Stated in 1962 by the developer of CDC in the Declaration of Restrictions, quote, "Cuyahoga Cabos is a special purpose subdivision and is intended for the exclusive use and enjoyment of horsemen," end quote. It did not say for the exclusive or private use of CDC homeowners. The developers of Buena Vista Ranches, Sunburst Farms, and Shady Lane Estates continued with this desire of the community to be a unique area with bridle path easements to be enjoyed by the public for the purpose of equine activities. Governmental agencies put their stamp of approval on all of this. None of these easements were ever restricted from one another until now. We have one homeowner who has decided that he alone has the authority and right to take away our free use and enjoyment of the Shady Lane bridle path easement. This is so wrong in so many ways. The public has harmoniously been able to use all of these easements for over 60 years, and no homeowner or HOA should have the power to take this right of enjoyment away from the public on their own. If a homeowner is allowed to have this power, then there will sure be more walls and obstructions that will restrict the public's use of the bridle paths. This will deteriorate the function and condition of our equine community. Like to remind the council one of the clauses in the City of Tempe's mission statement, quote, "to protect our local communities from deterioration," end quote. Please enforce the city code as the city did so in 2010. I urge you to vote no on the resolution, on the Resolution 7C, and protect us from any deterioration of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Ellen Pope. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor Woods and members of the council, I just wanted to ask you to vote no on the resolution regarding the wall. I live at 1619 East Citation Lane in Sunburst Farms. My home is about 250 meters to this house, and I walk the, I don't have horses, but I love the neighborhood there. We live in respect of each other. I could move my wall all the way to Shady Lane, but I won't because it's not right. It's also a city code that we respect. I'm asking you to take the obvious, and to me, simple solution is to have this wall put back where it's supposed to be. There's a major water line that runs under it, the trees are gone. I walk that path every single day, and I admire the llamas and the horses. I like to see the horses walking by, that's why I moved to that neighborhood. We all move there because we have land and because people respect each other. And I just think it sets a really scary precedent, and I think it's punishing those of us that follow the rules, that if you don't take a stand that this is wrong and that wall needs to come down, then we will incur costs. This is not going to go away for us. It might go away for the City Council, but if the water lines have issues or other people start encroaching more, we all have to deal with it. So I'm asking you to please go back to the original question and have the wall removed and set back where it's supposed to be, and vote no on 7C1. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Matthew Schmel. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor Woods, council members, my name is Matt Schmel. I live in Sunburst Farms in Tempe. And again, I am speaking on behalf of the Buena Vista Ranches, Cuyahoga Cabos, and Sunburst Farms neighborhoods. The City Attorney's Office started down this declaration path once before, and I and the other neighbors were threatened with being dragged into court. This resolution to take this bridle path matter behind 1710 East Carver to court was wrong before, and it is still wrong and unethical, although it will certainly enable many facts to be brought forth. Examples include the 1995 agreement establishing the bridle path easement at the end of Shady Lanes, clearly benefiting the public, and showing that Tempe was in control as they wouldn't approve the development until the conditions were agreed to, including the public easement. Tempe told Nerwin he couldn't eliminate the bridle path easement. You asserted control of that bridle path again at that time, and it is public. Tempe's purchase and construction of their water pumping plant, which is public property connected to the bridle path easement at the end of Shady Lane Estates continues that. Additional failures in this include the refusal of this council to honor and enforce the legal agreement that the 1995 Tempe City Council signed. Additionally, when Dave Mitchellson, the CDC HOA president at the time, and the CDC neighborhood wanted to eliminate a portion of a CDC public bridle path in 2010, a path dedicated on the CDC plat map in a very similar manner as the Shady Lane dedication, Tempe asserted they had full control and authority over the public bridle path shown on the CDC plat map. It is unethical and wrong to change that policy now. And further, in October of '21, this council voted unanimously to take legal action-- to take legal action to resolve this, a decision never publicly repealed. And yet, the notice of violation was quietly canceled on a Sunday. Jeff Tamulick told me that Tempe had a policy against code enforcement regarding residential property. Turns out that wasn't true, and he had to retract those words. The city attorney and the mayor approached the neighborhood and offered us $100,000 to sue Nerwan, and stated mistakes were made. Ironically, tonight, Items 7A, 4, 5, and 6 is this city council approving final plats for Lollap Victoria Commons. Will the future homeowners know the city won't honor its word and commitment for their homes and community? This council and the city needs to do its job and follow your oaths. The only ethical path before you is to vote no on this resolution, enforce the city code, and get that wall down. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lawrence Hudson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Mayor, council members, my name is Lawrence Hudson, and I live at 1517 East Caya de Caballos. What Mr. Nerwan has done is simply theft. He has stolen property that we own in common. And I call on you this evening to vote against this resolution, to kick the can to another court, and take responsibility for this and force him to give the property back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That is the final speaker card I have on Item 7C1 in my hand. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council?
I filled the card out, I don't know why it's not there, but that's okay. My name is Gray Haglund. My wife was the Assistant City Attorney for the city of Chandler. We were in that whole mess when they decided to form Shady Lane Estates. Okay. She was in front of the council when they wanted to change the zoning because that was originally a ranch. And it was then broken into the multiple homes that it is now. And one of the big problems that we had was this situation with the horse path in the beginning. And that was that he wanted to take the horse path over. And he agreed when he did the plat to leave the horse path the full width and sacrifice those few feet. Okay? So this was from the original developer of this property. Moving this wall should have never been allowed when we called when they tore it down because we called the city at that point. Okay? Then, my wife passed away since then. And I wish she were here because she was so much better at it. As the Assistant City Attorney, she did many of these things for Chandler. Okay? And we really sat in front of you very specifically and said, "You have to keep these guys on the proper setback for the horse paths, and their water supply systems all have other issues." And by the way, that was originally one ranch, the whole area. Okay? And it was irrigated also. And there is a line that runs under the wall that they just cut off right essentially where the wall is. Okay? And that could be another problem that we end up having to do some work on and have to tear the wall down again on that. So if we move the wall to the correct spot in the first place, none of these problems would exist. And I rest my case on the fact that the developer agreed to the wall where it was. He did not get permission to move this wall from you. And it's very important that you guys stand the ground of the city and do what was originally planned in this kind of a situation. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Hi, William Owens, 1309 East Secretariat Drive in Sunburst Farms, Tempe. So I just wanted to come up and represent some, a lot of the other homeowners that can't be here tonight to express their frustration with the council to have this go on for almost four years now. We just request that you honor the plat that was there to remove the wall that this gentleman has taken. That's all we're asking. Follow the law that you guys set forward, this previous council set forward when they set the plat for the bridle path. He asked for permission, did not get it. And we and probably a dozen other homeowners are just asking that you please follow this plat and take it back. Make the homeowner please follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on Item 7C1? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion. Okay, do you want to, okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've worked tirelessly over the last four years to remove what I believe is this illegal wall. I've met with residents over and over again and share their concerns and agree with what they've presented tonight. I am also a horseback rider, I've ridden by that wall many times. And when it first came up, it was actually, I think it was about four years ago, the Wrangler newspaper came out and interviewed all of us, or a lot of us that were horseback riders. And we sent the message to the community. And I know that there were hundreds of signatures collected by Matt and other folks that, Katie Holdich in our neighborhood, collected signatures. And so this isn't like a few people. This isn't affecting 10 people that are, you know, very vocal. This is hundreds of people that are being affected by this wall and are upset about this wall. And I know that it probably would be faster to get it in front of a judge, which I think you'd win. But I can't vote yes on this in good faith. I think it's wrong. And I think it should have been, never been allowed to go up in the first place. Those trees were beautiful that were there that are now gone. They provided a lot of shade on that path. They're gone. And I just will be voting no on this. And I appreciate all the residents that I've met with, and some I haven't met with that have come up tonight. And I just really appreciate your hard work. And Matt, you've really led the charge on this, and Stan. And I want people to know that publicly. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No clapping, please, I'm sorry. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I know this has been going on for a while, and it's frustrating. The first thing that's frustrating is, you know, every neighbor should be a good neighbor, right? To encroach, just to encroach because they think they can, you're not being a good neighbor. It's horrible. But then the other side of it too is, when we look, and I think the city has more clarification than I do on the legalities of this. Because at the end of the day, I always just say, "Put the wall back and be done with it." Done. I mean, it was the stupidest move ever. But the situation I think the city had was, is this a city issue? Is this an HOA issue? And where does it lie? And I think that the thought of, and I take this as going to another judge to get clarification, and I agree with Vice Mayor, you probably would win. Because I don't know how this guy can do what he did, and especially if there's a water line. Now, I'm going off of what I'm told without seeing the map or talking to anybody else that understands this. I know the SRP has to get their trucks in there. And presently, the SRP has never said anything about it in terms of their, because they usually scream if their rideaways are taken away. And they haven't said anything about this. But at the end of the day, it's a horrible deal. So I think we need clarification. But you guys don't want to go to court? So be it. I'll vote no.
All right, next, anyone else, sir? Councilmember Garland?
I mean, I don't think any of us want that wall to be there. But I think because it has been going on for so long, it seems like that this resolution, this vote that we were looking at was something that was not done just by the city of Phoenix, I mean, Tempe coming up with this. But this was done with the residents that are involved to come up with this solution, to take it to a court so that we can find out exactly who the parties are and how we can move forward. And it seems like, as it has been said, that we have been going through this for four years and going back and forth and getting different information. It just seems like the right thing to do would be to go ahead and move forward with this, to get that final information and have it by the court. And then we all know exactly where we're at and what we can do. Because it still seems like there is some gray in there that is frustrating, that is making it difficult for us to be able to figure out, any of us on council and our residents, to find out how we can remove that wall that shouldn't be there. As Vice Mayor Adams had said, I've ridden down there on my horse. I've walked down there, I know exactly where it is. I've taken other people down there. So I know what you're talking about, that wall. In our neighborhood, in Buena Vista Ranches, we had somebody that started to build a wall and dug the footings for a wall. And we had to talk to them because they were encroaching on the bridle path. And the board was able to get them very kindly. It worked out really well for them to not do it. So I know that if an HOA steps up, it can be, we stopped it in our neighborhood, and it was very easy to do. But I'm not sure what happened in Shady Lanes. But I thought that this proposal that was brought to the city was brought because of the work that was done between our staff and our mayor and our residents. So I'm really, I'm surprised that we are where we're at right now. Because again, I think the quickest way for us to find out exactly who is responsible and exactly how we can move forward and to get a good, great path would be to take this to court and let this move forward. So I just have a question for the city attorney. Could you explain that again, exactly what this does and how this can help move this forward?
Mayor, Councilwoman Garland, yeah, the fundamental issue here is an adjudicative body. The city council is a legislative body, make laws. But courts are adjudicative bodies that would decide these questions that are not clearly, although the bridle path easement is set forth, it doesn't identify who the legal owner or the rights to enforce that. So that's what we would look to a court to say is, "You have the right, you disproperty owner of the city, whoever it may be, the court will decide who has the rights to enforce the easement." And that would be the pathway to, if it is appropriate to have the wall taken down, that would be somebody that has the rights and easement would have to be the one to enforce that. So the court, so it really has to be in a court. So there's two options, city court versus superior court. Because there's property issues, those would normally go to a superior court. That's the proper adjudicative body. So that's what's proposed by my office in consultation with the city manager's office to put this to bed, have the court decide because that's the one entity that can truly make a declaration and clear up the ambiguities that are on the plat, unfortunately.
Okay, so again, it goes back to, I think that this, I look at this as giving us clarity in how we can move forward so that we can do the right thing in working to get this fence removed. Because I look at this and say, "Well, yeah, Mr. Nerwan should not have put that fence up." But I also look at Shady Lane's HOA and say, "Why did you tell him not? He couldn't do it." So I'd like to see more clarity in that. So is that the information and is that what we would be getting from the courts if we move this forward? And again, once we get that information, your city council will be supporting whatever that decision is on how we can come to a resolution. But I think, again, this is the right path in trying to figure out who's at fault. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilwoman, yeah, that's the fundamental, that's the heart of the issue is, again, the ambiguity in the easement. The plat is actually Shady Lane Estates. If I could be corrected, but I haven't seen anyone here from the actual Shady Lane Estates that has asserted, and my understanding from the investigation is that the Shady Lane Homeowners Association hasn't asserted any interest in it. So yeah, there's a lot of ambiguity in the path forward to resolving that ambiguity is through a legal action. There isn't one that the city council can offer short of having directing staff to take a matter, a legal matter to a court to have it adjudicated, so.
Okay. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the members of the public who came to speak to us today. It has been a long, long time, been four years. I sat with Stan Lee and Matt at the porch four years ago, maybe even a little bit longer to talk about this issue. And it is unfortunate that it is still going on to this day. I think Doreen did a great job, excuse me, Councilmember Garland did a great job of kind of laying out, and of course, our city attorney, laying out kind of the issue that we have here, kind of the pickle that we're in. I don't think any member of this council is in agreement that the wall should be there. I think what we're struggling with is what is the course of action, if any, that we have the legal authority to take to address this wall? There's a lot of ambiguity in it, as our city attorney just kind of pointed out to us. There's a lot of ambiguity in another issue we're going to have a little bit later as a lot of people are here to discuss as well. I agree with Councilmember Garland in that I'm a little surprised that folks don't want this to go for a summary judgment to the superior court. Because to me, that seems like that's kind of our fastest path to a resolution. If they come back, and I can tell you, the council is, you know, hopeful. I don't want to say confident because you try to couch your words when you're in public office, but that you'll prevail in this judgment. And then when that happens, I'll be the first to say, "Mr. Nerwan, tear down this wall." But the fact of the matter is, we can't act without being given that authority, not in a legally responsible way. And I think, again, we're all looking to fix this problem, but we have to make sure that we're going about the correct process to do so. No one is trying to encroach on your bridle path any further than, other than one individual. No one is hoping that this problem will continue on for another year, two years, et cetera. But without some sort of clarity on our authority, on the interested parties, there's not a whole lot we can do legally yet. So when, I will be voting yes because I want to put this issue to bed. I want a judgment, and then I want that judgment to be in favor of you all, and then I want the wall taken down. And I think this is the clearest way to do that. And I say that with some authority in that we've been talking about it for four years. And if we could have done it four years ago, we would have. And we could have done it two years ago, we would have. And this is our best attempt to date to bring you guys some resolution. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for everybody, their comments. I'm the newest council member, so I have to ask a couple of clarifying questions because I'm getting in there, but I'm the newest one. This has been complicated. So I'm going to ask you, as attorney, if we were to go, say it was voted down, what would be the, I want them to understand, what would happen next? What could we do as city council, what we cannot do? Because I think they need to be clear on what we can and we cannot do. Because that's where, I think that's where that line mucks because I'm hearing, you got to, you have to start, you have to do something. So if we were to vote it down, what would be our next step? If that was the situation? Because I need to know if there's anything we actually can do after that, or would we still have to just go to court in the same way that we send them? I'm just making it clear.
Mayor Woods, Councilmember Hodge, that again, I think that's the crux of the issue is, as pointed out by Councilmember Keating, it's been just talking for a few years. We don't see, we've evaluated this, I've had two attorneys working on this, evaluating. We've reviewed every public comment that came in. We reviewed the documents that came in from the speaker regarding, which by the way, was an abandonment, which is a statement that the city doesn't have a public interest there. So there isn't another reasonable path forward to recommend other than to just let the issue fester. Public comment, well, yes, citizens have the right to public comment, but that's not going to reach a resolution of the issue. The other thing we have to keep in mind is, right or wrong, Mr. Nerwan is the property owner. He is the underlying legal property owner for that, which the easement sits on. So right or wrong, he has rights that have to be, are entitled to due process. So the reasonable path forward to put this matter to a resolution is the one we've recommended. We don't have an alternate recommendation for you other than that, or, you know, speak now, or we just leave it and it continues to fester without any resolutions.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm clear. So if we say, if it votes no, we can say, "Oh, no, it won't go to court. We won't put the resolution there." But there's nothing more we can do except wait, is what you're saying?
On your agenda tonight is our request for authorizations to move forward. There is an alternative request because we don't have a legal recommendation.
Is my microphone on? I'm just wanting to make sure.
looked through the files, multiple attorneys. This is the reasonable recommendation that we have as a reasonable path forward towards resolution. We didn't provide an alternative recommendation because we don't have one at this time. So if the council were to decide to vote down the resolution, we would have to go back to the drawing board, potentially come back to you in another executive session and talk further and discuss if we think there's another way. But as of right now, we haven't really identified a reasonable path to solution short of this. So it's not something we're anxious to do. This is just the, the recommendation we have as a council to have it resolved, so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Keating has something to that point, then, Councilmember DeBarre?
Yeah. So, so to that point, so I'm understanding, Mr. City Attorney, without some sort of movement for adjudication, resolution, or whatever in the superior court, the status quo as it has been for the last four years remains?
Mayor Woods, Councilmember Keating, that's the, the likely scenario at this time. The, the original proposal discussion was a code enforcement action. We have reviewed that, it's been reviewed by previous attorneys prior to me joining the city. That was determined not to be a, a good path forward, keeping in mind what we talked about in terms of Mr. Nurewski is the property owner, his right and his right to have an adjudicative process. So as of right now, yeah, if the resolution is voted down, it will sit there, there's nothing, we don't have an alternative solution, other than if the parties were willing to talk or something. But right now, we don't have an alternative solution available.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBarre?
And that's to my point, I guess. Thanks. No, no, you're good. But, but just to be clear, we turned this down, and, and just as I said, we go in and say, hey, tear that fence down. He says, no. We're going to court. We go to court, this starts festering off a little bit more. So going that process, is it the same outcome as the outcome we're going, proposing tonight?
Mayor Woods, Councilmember DeBarre, essentially, that's, that's where it's, it would likely to be to end up, the, you know, the superior court is the body that has the authority to adjudicate property rights in this county. So how it ends up there, it could, the city could say, tear this down, Mr. Nurewski may ignore us, which he certainly ignored to this point in time. To do, to follow through that, we would have to go to superior court, either way. So the likely result would be, because there's an adjudication necessary and the proper adjudicative body is the superior court, that's the likely, if it goes anywhere, it goes to, goes that route.
I guess my question would, yeah, my question would be to the people that spoke, has this conversation changed your mind by a raise a hand? Okay. Got one?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess I'll chime in. I, I think this is my, my big issue here too, because I mean, this has, I think my first meeting about this matter was during probably the second month of my term, so probably around, I would say, August, September of 2020 was the first time I actually talked with residents in the area regarding this matter. You know, and now, you know, the challenge is, you know, I've been here now almost four years. You know, Eric, Mr. Anderson is our third city attorney, who's actually been looking at this matter. And I've got a couple of college degrees, but none of them is a law degree. And as a matter of fact, none of the folks up here are attorneys. I'll be the first one to admit things that I know, and first of all, the things that I do not know. And my thought about going down this path was to try to find a way to get a definitive answer about exactly what is the situation here on this matter. You know, I, the residents here, who I've, I've talked to for nearly the last four years, and folks who are clearly in the audience, who want the wall taken down, I'm absolutely sympathetic to that issue and don't feel that the notion of putting, of moving a wall further back into the bridle path is the right thing to do, just from frankly, a neighborly standpoint. I mean, that's just, I want folks in here to understand that my perspective is, I'm not saying that I think that this is a good thing to do, or the neighborly thing to do, when you have so many other people, 250 to 300 people, living in all of these different neighborhoods that are affected by this. It was something that I personally would not have chosen to do. At the same time, I'm not fully understanding of some of the law behind this and going through the, all the different opinions that we've gotten over the years from our city attorneys. At the end of the day, I tend to fall on the side of trying to say, I have to rely on my city attorney and the team of attorneys that we have in our office to provide me with the best advice about how to move forward. And frankly, my desire in this matter is not, I think like many of the council members are saying, is not to kick the can further down the road on this matter at all. We've been doing this, as you talked about, for roughly about four years now, and I would love to get a resolution tomorrow, if at all possible. But at the same time, what I'm looking for in this situation is a definitive answer by the court that actually can provide one, which is the Maricopa County Superior Court. And my perspective would be, if the, if the ruling came back from a judge there that said, absolutely, City of Tempe, this is your responsibility to enforce this, I would be the first one saying, let's do it. Let's go ahead and take care of it. We now have a definitive decision about who is actually responsible for this matter, and we can take action immediately at that point. But without that, you know, I'm basically, as a person who's a non-lawyer, going against the opinion of pretty much all of the attorneys in my, in my office, who actually have the ability to, to provide advice to me on what I think is the best thing to do. And as I mentioned before, you know, Mr. Anderson is now the third attorney I've talked to on this matter during the nearly four years that I've sat up here. So my, my purpose in any way, shape, or form is not to kick the can down the road, because I would like to resolve this. I would like to resolve this, frankly, I would hope, on behalf of the neighbors who are sitting here and folks watching at home. But I feel like I need a definitive answer from the court and from a judge that is, that is the appropriate one to make this decision. And I can promise you, if the decision that comes back is something that says, the City of Tempe, this is your responsibility, you have to enforce this, the conditions on the plat map are the ones that you absolutely have to enforce, I would be the first person down here saying, we need to do that, 100%. But without me being an attorney myself, I have to rely on the best advice that I'm being given by my city attorney's office about how to best proceed to get a 100% definitive answer on this matter. Because as I said, this has been going on for four years, and I would like to bring this to a resolution. And I know all the folks in the audience would, 100 times more than I would like to bring it to a resolution, because you are the ones that are affected by this matter. And I definitely want to be a partner in that, but I need to get a resolution from the court that can actually provide it. Anyone else? Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, I have one more question. Everybody, they're keep talking about the pass council, and they passed it, but they, it was rescinded. Can you explain a little bit, do you understand a little bit what happened? Because I think, I don't want to fall into the same trap that we already did before. If we do, we go into it and we say no, and we're going to go fight it, but then we turn, find out that we're not legally binding. So I just want to know a little bit more about that, because I've heard that over and over again, the pass council did this, and, but it was also rechanged, rescinded back. So can you explain that a little bit more?
Mayor Woods, Councilmember Hodge, I'll do my best, as you know, I wasn't here. This is from reviewing the file, I did see the resolution. It's a little bit different than what's been identified. It's very similar to what was proposed here, because that actually dates back to, to city attorneys. I didn't have full clarity as to why it was not pursued, so I felt it was best to bring it back to the council, especially since there's been a council change, two city attorneys changed, for essentially asking a very similar question to Ms. Council. I will tell you that we are prepared to move forward, and if the council decides to adopt the resolution, we're prepared to move forward. And it's worked for us, but we're, we're ready and willing to do that work to, to put a resolution to, to this, and we think that's the best way to go forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward on, to approve 7C1.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve item 7C1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Any further comments? Okay, hearing none, please vote. And that motion passes four to two, with Councilmember Chin absent. Okay. That moves us to item, to the non-consent agenda. Item number eight, all items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. The first section is item 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item under the section is 8A1, which is to adopt a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of City of Tempe Arizona general obligation bonds, series 2024A, and general obligation refunding bonds, series 2024B, authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, delegating the authority to approve certain related matters, and authorizing and ratifying related actions, agreements, and documents. Is there any questions from council? Are there any questions, I should say? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Somebody's behind.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item passes five to zero, with Councilmember Chin and Councilmember Keating absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of City of Tempe Arizona excise tax revenue refunding obligations, series 2024, and related documents, authorizing the redemption in advance of maturity of certain outstanding obligations, and authorizing the taking of all other necessary actions contemplated by this resolution. Council, any comments or questions?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes five to zero, with Councilmember Chin absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. There are actually no items scheduled this evening, which moves us on to the second hearing and final adoption for items on the non-consent agenda. The first item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to receive public comment on the fiscal year 2024-2025 annual action plan for the community development block grant, home investment partnership program grant, and emergency solutions grant, and adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2024-2025 action plan upon approval of the funding activities. This is also a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Council, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero, with Councilmember Chin absent. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS TOD to MU4 TOD, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new seven-story mixed-use development consisting of 275 dwelling units and commercial uses on two acres for Apache and McClintock located at 1734 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Buse Gilbert McGroter, P L L C. I know we had a presentation during the first hearing on this item. Council, do you wish to see anything else? Okay, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion, and I will move on to see if there's any further comments or discussion from council, or is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge, and I believe seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
I did.
And that item passes six to zero, with Councilmember Chin absent. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a public water line easement located on the south side of Apache Boulevard and west of Rural Road. This is also a public hearing item, so if there's any public testimony, please get my attention. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero, with Councilmember Chin absent. The last item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance of the City of Tempe, Arizona, amending chapter 26A Tempe City Code by adding Article III relating to the payment of prevailing wages on city construction contracts, subject to the requirements of Title 34 Public and Building Improvements, Arizona Revised Statutes. I see Tom Dunsey and Lisette Camacho coming up, so I'll go ahead and bring them.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of short comments here tonight. I'm going to speak specific, oh, I'm sorry, Tom Dunsey, deputy city manager, joined by Lisette Camacho, financial services director. I'm going to speak very specifically to one issue that was brought up in the City of Phoenix, and hopefully provide council a little bit of clarity. As you know, our ordinance was modeled after the City of Phoenix, that's up for consideration tonight. One of the questions that came up was from the public utility providers, are they subject to the ordinance? So public utility providers, we typically have work done on our contracts, public utility providers come in and work on their infrastructure that they own. And so the way our ordinance was crafted, it basically says, this includes contracts solicited in accordance with the city's procurement code and Arizona Revised Statutes, Title 34. Now, our procurement code expressly excludes utility work or utility services from our procurement code. Therefore, it's our stance, and I just wanted to be clear to council, that public utilities are not subject to this ordinance. And be happy to certainly answer any questions or any other questions. And if there are no questions, Mayor, we ask that you open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, then, let's go to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. And I've got all my cards here. Once again, I will call these up in the order in which I received them. The first speaker I have this evening is Matthew Kapalby. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Matthew Kapalby, and I'm actually here tonight as a citizen, not as a formal representative of any particular organization. I actually currently reside in Tucson, but felt that it was definitely worthwhile to, to be here this evening and speak on this very poignant matter. So anyway, I wanted to thank you all, and Councilmember Keating and Mayor Woods, for your very deliberative and careful process regarding this matter. And it's, again, very, very poignant and important to many of the working folks within the City of Tempe. We also want to thank your staff and consultant for their diligent efforts regarding this issue as well. Adopting this prevailing wage ordinance will help reconstitute the social contract that used to belong between business and workers, and help build our, build our nation's middle class. Soon, skilled workers here in Tempe will be able to afford and contribute to Tempe's economy and tax base. They'll be able to afford rent, food, and utilities, which they're struggling to do now, and without relying on others and welfare in order to make that possible. And they'll even possibly be able to afford to buy homes, because they're finally going to be getting a livable wage that meets their skill set. Most of all, this will help close the disparity between the wealthy and the working poor. The working poor, I think, is a ridiculous term, but unfortunately, it's much too common here nowadays in our, in our communities. And this is a step in the right direction. And again, I want to thank you all for your deliberative and careful
I actually currently reside in Tucson, but felt that it was definitely worthwhile to be here this evening and speak on this very poignant matter. So, anyway, I wanted to thank you all, and Council Member Keating and Mayor Woods for your very deliberative and careful process regarding this matter. And it's, again, very, very poignant and important to many of the working folks within the City of Tempe. We also want to thank your staff and consultant for their diligent efforts regarding this issue as well. Adopting this prevailing wage ordinance will help reconstitute the social contract that used to belong between business and workers, and help build our nation's middle class. Soon, skilled workers here in Tempe will be able to afford and contribute to Tempe's economy and tax base. They'll be able to afford rent, food, and utilities, which they're struggling to do now, and without relying on others and welfare in order to make that possible. And they'll even possibly be able to afford to buy homes, because they're finally gonna be getting a livable wage that meets their skill set. Most of all, this will help close the disparity between the wealthy and the working poor. The working poor, I think, is a ridiculous term, but unfortunately, it's much too common here nowadays in our communities. And this is a step in the right direction. And again, I want to thank you all for your deliberative and careful efforts in making this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Colin Diaz. Please come forward. State your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. For the record, my name is Colin Diaz, and I serve as the President and CEO for the Tempe Chamber of Commerce. As you all know, the Tempe Chamber has opposed a prevailing wage ordinance for, over time for several reasons, and today I'm here to articulate three that I'd ask for you to consider as you guys deliberate this vote. Firstly, should the ordinance pass, it's anticipated that the City of Tempe will face legal challenges, notably from Goldwater Institute. They've explicitly stated that the intent to sue based on violations of Arizona's Revised Statutes 34-321. The defense of such litigation could drain valuable city resources as well as staff time with the strong possibility that the institute could prevail. Secondly, a no vote would allow the judiciary to resolve ongoing prevailing wage litigation independently, permitting the court to assess the legitimate, excuse me, legality of prevailing wage in the current Goldwater lawsuit aligns with prudent policymaking and ensures that any legislative action is informed by judicial review. And thirdly, the ordinance will disproportionately impact our local small businesses. And I know many of you on council are firm proponents of our small business community, but many local contractors and our mom-and-pop shop contractors may be financially impacted by this, which would not only effectively exclude them from participating in city projects, but would also be a detriment to our community's economic diversity, which we have held very closely, and I know many of you have here as well on council. So, again, on behalf of the business community and the Tempe Chamber, I urge you to consider these carefully and vote against the prevailing wage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Mike Gardner. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. It's great being back in this chamber. Many years ago, I served in the Arizona Legislature, and I used to come and visit the Tempe City Council on a regular basis since this was my legislative district. But I'm here today, I'm representing the Arizona Builders Alliance, were opposed, very much opposed, to this item. The prevailing wage item has been discussed in two different cities so far, multiple cities. City Flagstaff has also considered this and has not moved forward with it, but City of Phoenix has adopted one, as you know. City of Tucson, and those are both being litigated, as been referred to. They're being litigated because Arizona Revised Statute is crystal clear. This is one of those, unlike the previous one where you're looking for legal guidance, Arizona Revised Statute 34-321 is crystal clear. It says the city, a city, shall not adopt a prevailing wage. Now, some are throwing out the smokescreen, well, if you do a minimum wage, and minimum wage might be similar enough to a prevailing wage, or maybe there's some wiggle room. A minimum wage and a prevailing wage are completely different animals. So, make no mistake, this is an illegal act, this will be, and you will end up in court. But beyond that, let's talk about the policy itself. Is there a public policy benefit for passing this? And I would propose to you that there is not. Currently, in the City of Tempe, construction wages are highest they've ever been. It's not unusual for somebody working for a construction company to make ninety-eight, ninety thousand, ninety-nine, hundred thousand dollars a year on average. Those are good-paying jobs. In addition, the benefits are also profound, whether it's paid time off, tuition reimbursement, housing assistance, other things that it takes to attract and retain quality workers. So, this is not a solution that has found a problem that needs to be fixed. But, as alluded to, it does create additional problems. Two problems that I want to make sure you're aware of, that's been alluded to. This will hurt small businesses. Not my opinion. It's not my opinion. I want to quote the City of Phoenix, when they looked at this. City of Phoenix Staff Report said, "This will reduce the number of contractors bidding on city projects that could result in delays, cancellations, or changes to the scope of the project." City of Phoenix recognized this is going to hurt small businesses. Number two, your own staff has said this is going to hurt Tempe taxpayers. If you pass this, if you survive the court challenge, which you most likely won't, that's gonna be costly. In addition to that, the City of, according to your own staff, the City of Tempe is gonna have to pay between another two and a half to seven million dollars annually to pay for this. Two and a half to seven and a half million dollars a year annually. That's not going to fix any new roads. That's not gonna build any new affordable housing. That's not going to build any new projects for city parks. That just goes for administrative costs. Now, Arizona Builders Alliance, I represent union and non-union. I don't care which shop you are, but the City of Tempe should not put their thumb in saying that a union contract is more valuable than a non-union contract. We say reject this, treat all contractors equally.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anytime. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Ricardo Carla. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, council, my name is Ricardo Carla. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, but I am the President of the Associated Minority Contractors of Arizona, and I represent small business throughout the state, especially in the contracting industry. This is something that has been brought forth, and we have discussed how the effects it would have on these small businesses, at the same time eliminating them from being able to participate in City of Tempe projects, because they would not meet that criteria. They would rather face the injuries than have to put waste money and possibly put themselves out of business just to meet your criteria of prevailing wage. The other thing on that, and I've mentioned this before, is that our members or companies that are part of my association, also the ABA, you know, we have union and non-union. And depending on the job, if it's signatory, they do the signatory work. If the signatory is not needed, then they don't do the signatory work. Because a lot of our companies, especially our larger corporations, do work on multi-states and everything else where it's required. But here in the state, it's not required. But I have been polled my members and other small businesses, and I've been told that they refuse to do prevailing wage. They've done it before, and they refuse to do it again. So, passing this ordinance will eliminate them from being able to compete on City of Tempe projects. And you can't say that the projects built in this city aren't quality products. And it's been done by these contractors that have been longtime contractors and faithful to the City of Tempe and other municipalities in building their cities. So, again, I ask you, not only on my behalf, but on behalf of all my members, that to please do not pass this ordinance.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Jason Sangster. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Woods, council. My name is Jason Sangster, Business Manager, Ironworkers Local 75, Arizona. I represent over thirteen hundred ironworkers throughout the state. We ask that you pass prevailing wage in Tempe. One of the biggest problems Tempe is currently facing is homelessness. In fact, the city just approved ten million acquisition of a property to convert a former hotel into a homeless shelter. A recent study has shown that people are not homeless because of addiction, drugs, or alcohol, but because they are not making enough money. To afford rent, passing prevailing wage will help address this issue here. We can be proactive instead of reactive when trying to solve the homeless crisis while putting more money into the local economy by passing prevailing wage. I guarantee you that all of Tempe's construction workers earning prevailing wage aren't going to go, aren't going to require taxpayers' assistance, and instead are going to be able to pay their mortgage, buy food for their families, shoes for their children. This ordinance is gonna stop wage theft and make sure that an ironworker gets paid as an ironworker. No longer can money be skimmed off the top of their paychecks to boost corporate profits. By including certified payroll, bad actors will be weeded out, which is going to create new opportunities for small, mid-sized, minority-owned contractors in the City of Tempe. I know there are plenty of contractors, including those that are owned by native and women, members that are looking to expand their businesses, and they will now have that opportunity to do so when prevailing wages pass. This will level the playing field for our contractors and eliminate wage theft. Lastly, we are aware that the opposition groups that are threatening to sue Tempe once you pass prevailing wage in your city, just like they did Phoenix and Tucson. Please know that we feel very confident that a judge will agree with Attorney General, the City of Phoenix, the City of Tucson, and other legal experts to find that, once and for all, cities have the right under Prop 206 to set minimum wage and benefits. We ask that you don't succumb to the fear tactics and instead stand with Tempe's working families by passing this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Mark Cardenas. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor Woods, honorable council members, for the record, Mark Cardenas of Phoenix, Arizona, representing sheet metalworkers Local 359, Teamsters Local 104, oilmakers Local 627, carpenters Local 1912, laborers Local 1184, and the Service Employees International Union. First of all, I wanted to thank our friends from the various contractors associations and chambers of commerce that spoke here right before I did. I have no doubt their passion and words are sincere, but I came here to assert to you that their fight is also ours. Now, what is that fight? It is a fight that began over a hundred and forty years ago. That was when construction companies from the southern United States began to undercut and underbid contractors in the western and northern U.S., including Arizona contractors. They did this by forcing lower pay upon their workers, misclassifying workers, and using lower-quality materials. After years of losing out on local jobs and local opportunity, our elected leaders had enough. Two visionary leaders, Senator James Davis from Pennsylvania and Representative Robert Bacon from New York, decided to pass legislation establishing a minimum wage for construction workers on federal projects. That one piece of legislation saved thousands of jobs for local skilled workers and continues to do so on federal projects today. Now, the next time any of you step on a large construction site in Arizona, I ask that you look at the cars in the parking lot. The overwhelming majority of vehicles you will see license plates from the states of Alabama, Florida, Louisiana, Mississippi, and Texas. The contractors doing this work undercut our local contractors and their workers using the same methods they did a hundred and forty years ago. This is why the local workers sitting behind me are asking for your consideration of this ordinance today. By the way, some of these contractors are the same contractors that are owned by large Wall Street hedge funds, such as BlackRock Investments and Carlyle Group. You know, the same hedge funds that continue to purchase homes in our community by the hundreds, driving up the cost of living, the price of housing, and the cost of groceries, and forces our families to make the hard choices on clothing, food, and even eviction. Our workers deserve the same construction minimum wage that other states and cities have deemed appropriate to enshrine into law. A wage that values the thousands of hours they spent training to graduate their apprenticeship, and a wage that values the hours they spend building projects in Tempe, ensuring our tax dollars go to projects that finish on time and on budget. Passing prevailing wage tonight will ensure that Tempe dollars stay with Tempe workers. I ask that you value Tempe workers, you show, excuse me, I ask that you show you value Tempe workers and vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is James Crutchfield. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is James Crutchfield. I'm the Business Manager of IBW Local Union 640 in Phoenix. I'm here today to promote prevailing wage for several reasons. Number one, it prevents substandard work and unqualified people from getting on jobs. How many of you here have tried to get a permit from the City of Tempe? I have. You know why? Because the plan reviewers are extremely strict, and they want to make sure that when you go out and do a job, they make sure that it's done exactly according to the plans. When I first started, I started as a contractor. One out of every four jobs I got was going around fixing other people's work, because people didn't know what they were doing. I recommend that you pass this ordinance. Don't play to the fear of anybody saying they're gonna sue you. This is right. This is what we should do. Thank you, council.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Sean Hutchinson.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having me. Sean Hutchinson, I live at 18180 North 89th Lane in Peoria. Came down tonight for this hearing. It was of my interest to see you guys get some good information about the impact of what prevailing wage ordinances can have on the workers that work on these jobs. That's really what the focus of this entire effort is, is to make sure that workers that are working, construction workers that are building the buildings that are needed to drive this economy, both, you know, with the large projects, the high-profile projects, right on down to mom-and-pop shops and, you know, commercial installations. The people that build these jobs, they go to work every day, and they do the work in construction, and they really are subject to, you know, the bidding process on a lot of the projects that go on. And, you know, I kind of like one of the previous presenters' reference to the Davis-Bacon Act and the history of the Davis-Bacon Act and how it came into play. You know, it was put into play, it was actually a Republican-led effort to make sure that, you know, contracting is fair. It is, it is, it is an act that prevented, basically, contractors using low-wage workers to make themselves more competitive and get bids awarded to them based on the fact that they could pay their workers less. And in local sense, in keeping good governance and good policy, you know, protecting the people that are doing the work by passing ordinances that protect their wages, protect their benefits, and protect their ability to, you know, make a living for, to support their families, that's the most important thing that you can actually consider. Because these people are really, you know, as the economy comes and goes, and as construction is very cyclical, where ups and downs of construction are very impactful to a lot of these workers, all of these workers. I come from that field. I'm not a speaker. I'm just here on my own. I do work in the electrical trade. I'm a director for the state's largest apprenticeship program for electricians. You know, I see the impact of wages and the, you know, ups and downs of construction and their impact on our young workers as they are trying to learn a trade, coming through an apprenticeship program. These ordinances that are being considered right now across the valley, across the state, they're gonna have a positive impact on their futures. And I really do appreciate all of your consideration in this ordinance. I think there's a lot of scare tactics being put out there, and I think it's, you know, this has already been proven to be good legislation and, you know, supporting good corporate citizens with the good contractors that pay their workers fair wages and fair benefits. So, again, I do appreciate your time tonight, and great seeing you all. I've seen some of you in several years, so good seeing you, and thank you again.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Bill Ruiz. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. William Ruiz, I'm a resident of Phoenix, Arizona. I'm a Business Manager for the Western Regional States Council of Carpenters, and it's an honor to address you tonight and ask for your support for this monumental passage of this ordinance. The many comments you heard tonight, I can only articulate something in one word, and that's training. Our training is who we are. Everything about our craft and our trade is to elevate that craft and trade through our training, much like our military who trains every day, much like every other profession, doctors, lawyers. They train, they school. We do the same thing. And for the council to consider a prevailing wage that would honor the time spent in the classroom and in the field, learning their craft to the highest level of professionalism possible, is what we ask of you tonight. I don't think there's anybody here that would disagree with me that we see time and time again that there are, like you heard earlier, a lot of workers that come from out of town, and they're just trying to make a living. They're trying to do whatever they can to survive. There'll be a labor one day if somebody puts them doing carpentry work, they'll do what they can, what they know, but that doesn't make them a... what they can, what they know, but that doesn't make them a certified tradesperson, any more than if you went to the dentist and a podiatrist walked in and, you know, he's, hey, I'm just filling in today. It doesn't work that way. But what we do is we pride ourselves in our training. All, all the trades here represented tonight, we, we, we pride ourselves in our training of who we are, and that the professionalism that you're going to see in, in the work on these jobs are going to be something that the city can be proud of, and that the, the members, the workers themselves, are going to be securing their right to a dignified retirement at the end of the day. We believe that government is our partner, not our benefactor, and so we manage our own trust funds, we manage our own healthcare plans, we're self-funded, and all of our contractors that we deal with in the carpenters, some 57-plus, are all private business enterprise that realize the value, the most important asset in their company is their employees. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The last card I have is from Albert Dare. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council persons. My name is Albert Dare. Some of you know me by another name, but that's okay. We won't say it, all right? But anyway, just to let you know, I want some of you that don't know me, the city of Tempe moved to me 63 years ago. At that time, I lived three miles out of town, and the city moved to me, okay? So I never moved to Tempe, but I've been here one long time, all right? Okay. I want to thank you for, first, what you folks have done the last few weeks for the homeless people in Tempe. It shows me that Tempe has a heart, and that's important in everything, no one to be left behind for any reason. I will tell you, I've, I am a disabled ironworker, have been, and very proud so. I worked over 20 or 30 years for fair labor contractors, recognized my skills and my abilities, and we sought to, that the job got done correctly, on time, and made money. One of the responsibilities of building a building is not to see how cheap you can do it, but to hope and pray to God that it stands up, all right? And sometimes you get what you pay for, and they fall down. I've got over 12 high-rises in downtown Phoenix, they're still there, okay? I'm older than them, but I have five buildings here in Tempe that I worked on in all those years. They're still standing. But I was going to tell you something, you know, I hear this saying every once in a while, that some contractor or some arrangement has been made, and someone's coming to town, and they're bringing a lot of high-paying jobs, right? You ever hear that? Yeah, all the time. Well, what they're saying when they say that is that they're acknowledging that there are people who don't have those jobs already, okay? But we want those good jobs. Why? Because those people can afford to, they don't become a burden on the city, buy their children some shoes. Well, I'm telling you right quick, I lived here all this time, I see I'm on yellow, and I can talk all night, but I won't. I believe this is the fairest thing for you to do, is to pass this ordinance. It shows that you care, that no one will be left behind, and let me tell you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good day. That's my pacemaker. I'm sorry, it was a good life, all right?
I, I can, I can tell you, I've been here for 12 years, and that is the first time I've heard that, my 12 years here. All right. All right, so that was the last card I had. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8C4? Yes, please, come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Fabian Sandes. I'm a regional manager for the western state's Regional Council of Carpenters, and I'm also the president of Local 1912, me representing over 5,500 members. And the core purpose of a prevailing wage is to prevent workers underpayment on public contracts compared to similar private sector jobs in the area. Prevailing wage rates are based on local market conditions, and to ensure taxpayers-funded projects do not, are not subsidized by substandard pay and benefits. I'll give you a little analogy about this, and what you are creating by passing prevailing wage is when you have a boxing match, you're always looking for the same, both fighters to be on the same, on same weight. You're doing the same thing. You're creating a level playing field for contractors to compete under, under those standards. So that way, it assures taxpayers that their money is being invested correctly. We thank you, and we urge that you pass prevailing wage ordinance.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8C4? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing, and I'm going to move on. I've got a couple of council members who wanted to speak, Councilmember Keating and then Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everybody who came out today, and the members of the public who wrote in, whether you're for or against, whether you're here today to speak for or against this ordinance. It's important that you participate in the process, and your voices are heard, whether we may disagree on an issue from time to time, your input is valued and is taken seriously. I know that most of you rather be somewhere else right now. I don't know why you'd want to spend your Thursday evening here at the Tempe City Council, other than this gentleman's great sense of humor is, you know, I mean, the entertainment's great, you know, there is a two-drink minimum, so make sure you tip the clerk on that. I, I want to talk a little bit just about this ordinance, and I'm more of a facts guy, but some of the, some of the things that the speaker said kind, kind of moved me a little, so I like to address those as well. Before I get into that, I, I do want to thank my colleagues. This has been going on, the prevailing wage working group was started in 2019, so it's been a long road getting from, getting from there to here. A lot's happened since 2019. I mean, a lot. I don't even want to go to, into it, but it, it's been, it's been quite a process, and particularly in the last year or so, this has been before this council, an executive session, eight times. Let me tell you, those discussions were, were certainly very spirited, so I, I think I speak for all my colleagues when I say that we're tired of talking about prevailing wage, and, and we're ready to, to move on it. And I'm glad that we're in the position that we are today, and I want to speak a little bit about why I am supporting this ordinance, as it's been something that I've been frankly trying to get done here in the city for over five years now. So with that, I'm going to speak on some items. I'd like to address some of the questions that have been asked. You know, one of them is what's the problem that we're trying to address? What's the cost of this, to the city? What's the rush? And what are the legal ramifications? And are there any unintended consequences that we might not be considering? This is my point of view, as someone who's worked on this project for a very long time, and, and as an advocate for the, the men and women who, who build our city. So when he, when he says things like, like, what's the problem? And that's actually a tough question to ask. I, I had, I had lunch with you two gentlemen, or breakfast, remember, 2000, early 2020 or 19, it's pre-pandemic, I know that. And, you know, you asked me that question, and I, and I struggled with that at the time, because I wasn't quite sure. You know, I know that, conceptually, this is something that I support, but what really am I trying to do? And I have done some, some research into it and looked into it a little bit, and, and there's been stories as far as wage theft goes, right? There was just an article in The Republic, the Valley Metro workers to receive 600K in back wages, and, and here's why, to the point that was made earlier by a gentleman, I forget which one. Almost everybody on this project was misclassified. They, they were, they, they had ironworkers classified as, as, I mean, I don't want to read, it's hard to read, ironworker, ironworkers classified as power tool operators, and a whole host of other thing. I mean, it seemed every, every skilled laborer in, in this project was somehow misclassified. And this was a project that was subject to Macon Davis. So they were misclassified, knowing that someone very well could come and check up on it and make sure that they were being paid the correct wage, and they were, they were still misclassified. Now, I'm a believer in, in the benefit of the doubt. I don't think you should ever subscribe malice to what could just be incompetence, what could be an honest mistake. But when you look deeper into the same article, you see that the firm that misclassified them had a history of misclassifying their workers. They'd been fined for it previously, to the tune of millions of dollars. Now, if I made a mistake that cost me even a few hundred dollars, it's very unlikely that I'd make that mistake again. But again, you know, maybe there's some sort of reasonable explanation here. Well, this firm was, did not take the opportunity to provide an explanation when asked by the Arizona Republic, they just quietly paid their fines and paid their back, their back wages, and, and went along with, with their life. So I, I think that's telling in that I'm not saying all companies that, that deal with construction projects, whether you're a big firm, small or pop, small, small or, or large, mom and pop, are necessarily out to exploit workers. I'm merely suggesting that there are people who would exploit workers, should they get the opportunity, should they have a legal pathway, or even not even have a legal pathway to do so. Does this happen in Tempe? We don't know, but I'm sure it does. I'm sure it does. There was an article sent to me from KTAR about a, a construction company in Tempe that was fined in 2022 for similar violations. So what this seeks to do is make sure that if there is some sort of violation of what workers are legally entitled to, whether that's money, whether that's benefits, there is some recompense for the victims of that wage theft. There is some way that the city can check, that worker, that, that, that there will be a record of people that were shorted their wages, this is money out of working families' pockets, that they, now they, they can't afford a rent, they can't pay their rent, you know, food, tuition, et cetera. These are wages that are rightfully due to individuals, and if someone had not checked, those workers who built the, the light rail would still be out, the over $600,000 in wages owed to them. So the timeline's been quite long, and from 2019, when we started, to 2020, when we did our first study, 2021, it came to me and Councilmember Aaron Dondo's working group. 2022, it came to work-study session, five times an executive session in 2023, three times in 2024, with our first draft ordinance that we had for first read just a few weeks back. So is there, is there a problem here? I, yeah, I, I think there is, and I think if we can take reasonable steps to prevent any sort of victimization of the people that we are relying on to build our public works projects, I think we should absolutely do that. A lot of, there's been a lot of talk about the cost to the city. We heard the turn, we heard the, the numbers of 2 million to 7 million dollars annually out of our budget. I'm going to split that difference, I'm going to take the mean of that, I'm going to take four and a half million for the numbers that I am going to talk about, so we'll just go right down the middle and say, you know what, it's not two, it's not seven, we'll say four and a half. Now, when you say this is four and a half million dollars annually out of our budget, we are talking about a, our CIP budget, our capital, our capital improvement projects budget. Our CIP budget annually is 616 million dollars. So yes, it will cost more out of our CIP budget to ensure that prevailing wages, to ensure that fair wages and the wages owed to the workers that are building our city-funded projects will, will, are, are paid, and, and are enforced in a manner that is reasonable. So for what is, what percentage is 4.4 of 616 million dollars? It's less than 1%. It's 0.72%. So we're talking about an increase to the annual CIP budget of 0.72%. For, for some perspective, that is 72 cents per hundred dollars spent. I think if you take that to the public and you say, if you could guarantee, if you buy anything, you buy a pair of shoes, you buy clothes, a jacket, whatever, if you can say, this is going to cost you $100, but for $100.72, I will guarantee you no one who produced this item for you was taken advantage of. I would find it hard to believe anyone would say, you know what, I'm going to save that $72. So this is, I'm not going to sit here and say, 4.5 million dollars is not a lot of money, because that's a ridiculous soundbite. It is a lot of money, but compared to the amount of money and the amount of projects that we do in the city of Tempe annually, it is not a significant amount. The city of Tempe, I believe, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, I believe we have 221 individual projects being funded by the CIP this year, and next year will be the same thing, and the year after that, if not more. So this is, again, it, it's a significant amount of money, but in the long run, in the bigger picture, it is a small price to pay to ensure equity and fairness in the city. There's been some talk about the rental tax repeal and the effect that it has on the city budget, and that is very concerning, and I, I get calls about it, an individual quite often wanted me to run this campaign to like reinstitute the rental tax, and I'm like, that is a losing campaign. He's like, well, why do you think that? Well, it's called the rental tax. So, but anyway, it, it does, it does provide challenges to the city, but what's important to remember is the rental tax goes into the general fund. The general fund has taken that hit of, I believe it's 15 million dollars, and our staff has done a great job of making sure that we mitigate any sort of losses that we have there. So no city services will be cut, we're not doing layoffs, we're not freezing hiring of our police officers and our firefighters, we, we are, we have a plan to mitigate those costs. However, the prevailing wage monies come out of our CIP budget. Our CIP budget is not affected by the rental tax loss. The rent, the CIP budget is funded almost most entirely out of our secondary property tax. Now, the thing about, and I'm getting in the weeds here, but this is an important distinction to make, the thing about the, the general fund and the CIP is we can subs, we can supplement the general fund with CIP money, but we can't take CIP money to make the general fund whole. So when we say that we're losing this 15 million dollars, that's regard, that adding prevailing wage to the CIP has, these are two separate issues. These are, these are two universes, and, and one is not going to fix the other. So just to be clear, we are not compounding the financial stress put on the city by the legislature and, and the, and the repealing of, of the rental tax. Now, is prevailing wage legal? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but I do know very smart lawyers who tell me it is, and I know smart lawyers who tell me that it isn't. And I know there's a law that says, that the gentleman pointed out, that says that it's not, and I know that there was a proposition passed by the voters that says that it is. It's ambiguous enough where I think this is worth pursuing, just like our shady lane deal, right? It's not entirely clear if it is legal or if it's not. I can tell you who thinks it's legal. The Attorney General of the state of Arizona thinks it's legal. She's probably pretty smart, smarter than me, smarter than some of, you know, the, the emails I've gotten calling me a jerk and et cetera, et cetera, and hey, I'm not saying I'm not a jerk, but you got to spell it right. So, and I, and I tell you, who, who I'm not entirely convinced is sure it is illegal is some of the folks in opposition. And I say this because in 2021, almost three years ago to the day, on May 28, 2021, I wrote a letter to Representative David Cook, reassuring him that I would not push prevailing wage on private projects, only city-funded projects. Why did I do that? Because there was an effort at the time in the legislature to explicitly make prevailing wage illegal. So if it, my So if it, my question would be to that, if it was illegal, why are we trying to make it more illegal? Right? So I I wrote this letter to Representative Cook. He voted against the the majority or voted against the the majority party, and prevailing wage was not taken up as as a legal action in the legislature that year. So to me, again, that kind of says that this is ambiguous enough where we need some sort of clarification on it. Now, does that mean we'll get sued? Almost certainly, right? I mean, I think that's kind of what is is to be expected at this point. Is there value in doing the right thing when it means having to have a fight? Absolutely. We've seen that time and time again throughout our history. Some of the most dramatic moments in our history are landmark court cases that disrupt the status quo a- and change society at its fun fundamental level. Remember when marriage equality was ruled on? That was, that was one of the most significant moments that I can remember in my lifetime happening, how overnight the entire zeitgeist, the entire status quo was changed in in the United States. Goldwater Institute, hey, they say they're gonna sue us, and I'm a believer that when someone tells you you're gonna do something, they're probably gonna do it. Goldwater Institute sues a lot of people. You go on their website and they have a hundred and forty-four cases listed on their website. This is a litigious group of people, this is something that they do. In fact, they're currently suing ASU over its quote discriminatory diversity, diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion regime. That's that's something, DEI regime. What could they possibly be talking about? Yeah, it turns out it's a training that their employees, ASU employees have to take. And there apparently is no real consequence if you don't take it, other than your supervisor will know. So do I think that there is um, a lot of merit in suing the city of Tempe? Again, I don't know, but some of the um, lawsuits that have been posted seem to be uh, rather frivolous. So, yeah, do I think we'll get sued? Yes, and I and I do think we'll we'll prevail. There is this 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 idea that prevailing wage is only for unions. This is some sort of giveaway to to unions, which is, I mean, just on the face of it, false. But I do want to talk about that a little bit. It's just the opposite. Union members already get the wages and benefits that the dignity of work provides them. They are already, they they are already at that level. This is for the people that don't have those protections of union membership, that don't have uh, brothers and sisters. They don't have legal representation. When they find out that they are short in their paycheck, the only option they have is to go hire a lawyer they can't afford to try to get wages back from a company that has much more resources than them. This is the level of playing field for all all workers, whether you're in a union or not, and you want to come to Tempe and we're gonna use Tempe taxpayer money to to fund the projects, you will be paid what is the standard wage. And I think that's an important distinction as well. Now, i- it's been, it's been said that prevailing wage will will hurt affordable housing. And certainly, I know no one wants to do that here. I think hous- the hous- housing crisis, in my opinion, is is the biggest issue that the that any municipal government can face right now. We have got to do something about this housing supply, except I said it a million times, I'm not gonna say it again. So I would never do anything, I know none of my colleagues would ever do anything that could possibly hurt affordable housing. To that end, our ordinance excludes private development, which is largely additional housing in the city. This is only for city-funded public works projects. Now, Mayor, I heard it's, I heard that it has been said that the city of Tempe should get into affordable housing, the business of affordable housing nonetheless. The city of Tempe is in the business of affordable housing, as a matter of fact. So what happens now when, a- as was also mentioned, you know, we're trying to build affordable housing on various sites in the city of Tempe? Now, is this gonna drive it up and prevent the city of Tempe from building affordable housing? No, because we excluded affordable housing projects from this ordinance as well, to build as much housing as fast as we can, as affordable as we can. So I'm I'm almost done here, my colleagues. One of the things I wasn't going to say, but but it it did strike me when we're talking about doing what what's right. And there'll be a lot of talk about the law and and what. This is now going to play out in in a different venue than 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 Tempe City Hall. And there'll be a lot of discussion on what's legal, what is the law? Um, and again, that, these aren't questions I have the answer to. But I I do think that one of my favorite things is, you guys all know the uh, the first codex of laws, Hammurabi's Code, right? First guy to write down laws, like, what 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 a profound uh, innovation. But the preamble to the Hammurabi's Code says, "The purpose of this document is to bring about the rule of righteousness across the land, so that the strong may not harm the weak." And I think that is something that all elected officials, all bodies of government should strive to live for to every, strive to to meet every day. With passing this ordinance, we are taking a small step in that direction. Is it going to solve every problem we have with labor? No. Is it gonna save the world from the city of Tempe? No. But it's going to move the needle in the direction that I think everyone can be proud of. So I was long-winded there, Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, with with that, um, I would like to make a motion, Mayor, to approve item eight C four.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Uh, so the motion's been made by Councilmember Keating, I think it was seconded earlier by Councilmember Hodge. Okay, uh, now I've got time for other discussion to take place. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prevailing wage, in my opinion, is a basic right of workers. You get health insurance, pensions and competitive wages. They all know how much they will be able to make and can actually buy a house as opposed to living in their cars. You get quality work. I want Arizona license plates and on those job sites. I don't want to see Texas, Texas plates or anybody else out of state plates at those job sites. I want the Arizona workers to be there. I know that they will be able to support our local businesses, because you're gonna have more money in your pocket and you're gonna be able to stimulate the economy. I'm about, I'm about jobs, I'm about stimulating the economy, taking care of businesses, and you guys are gonna be able to, you, men and women, um, are going to be able to do that in a better way with prevailing wage. I was deputy public works director for many years at the city of Tempe. I personally worked on Davis Bacon Act, because we received federal funding on many of the CIPs. So it was not difficult. We just knew that we were enforcing Davis Bacon or Bacon, Davis Bacon Act, and it was not difficult to do. It was not a big boogeyman, you know, over, hanging over our heads. We just paid the right wages, the the wages that were deserved by these employees. So I know firsthand what it is with this, to to um, have the Davis Bacon Act. And I manage the CIPs, the entire CIPs for the entire city. So I I'm I'm not new to this, this isn't my first rodeo. And most important to me is that they are able to support their families and and give them a good life and a home and whatever they need for their basic needs. And how about some extra things? Right? You can enjoy your families and 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 take care of your children. And that's why I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else further? Yes, Councilmember Hodge, yes, please.
Okay, um, thank you. I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight, polls for, I do. Um, I wear another hat, I'm a governing board member, so this is gonna explain why I believe in prevailing wages. I've always said, I can't look my students in the eye and say, it's never a wrong time to do what's right for my students. And when I look at my students and I look at the ones that are going off to college and the ones that are not, and my job is to make sure that the next generation is prepared financially and has the support that they need to make sure that they can maintain in this world. And when I look at prevailing wages, I'm not just looking at the people in this audience, I'm looking at their kids and their grandkids that's gonna be coming after that. And I can't look my kids in the eye and say that I've done what's right if I don't do what's right in my heart. And what's in my heart has always been that I'm gonna fight for the common man, because I am the common man. I am the person who has been in those situations. My family has always had to support by either someone helping, pushing it up. Where we weren't fully grad, college graduates, we've always been the workers. We've always been the people who has done the job. And for me to sit here and my, the people who stand before me, who put me where I'm at, my family, I could never look them in the eye and say, I didn't do what's right. And this is the time, no matter what it takes. And I know we're looking at lawsuits, we're gonna always look at lawsuits, we're a city. I know that there is good in, you know, people look at it, there might be pros and cons, but I look in my heart and the pros outweigh the cons. So I'm gonna definitely be supporting, yes. And I hope that people that my students look at me, when I see them next week on Wednesday, I can look them in the eye and say, I did something that was gonna make sure that I sustain their future. So I'm definitely supporting, yes, on that.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember DeBarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll keep it short, I don't think I can upstage Councilmember Keating, but here I go. Try. No, I I think, you know, this actually is a topic that probably longer than two thousand nineteen, because it seems like as soon as I got on council, this was a topic that kept on coming up, kept on coming up. And two thousand eight was the downturn I stepped into, and and there was nothing going on. In fact, we had buildings over here that were halfway constructed and stopped. Uh, then we come into getting out of that right to the pandemic, and then we come into something else, you know? It's just the timing of everything. But as Councilmember Hodge says, when is a good time? You know, always you have an issue coming up, and we're always asking, when is a good time, when is a good time? Time is now. Time is now to take a stand, time is now to take a charge on this. My my dad was a steel worker and Marathon Steel over here in Tempe for a number of years, and that was our income as a family, you know, while he supported my mom going through school and and uh, you know, then he got himself a job, you know, at APS. But the process is there, the process for people to actually achieve, and just like Councilmember Hodge said, the process for the youth to actually find a a trade that they can get into and be paid well. And I think it's said, you know, I'm a union worker myself for the Phoenix Fire Department, but at the end of the day, it's about the people having an opportunity, not me, but other people that want to have that trade, that want to learn a skill, that want to actually better themselves. The opportunity is out there, and the pay is out there, respectable pay. And I I think that at the end of the day, we're just trying to make sure that we're doing right um, by the type of work we're doing here at the city. And this is a step, you know, this is a good step. And I think it's a fair step, and I don't see much impact to the local business, I don't see anything like that. I see this is a construction thing, I see that this is gonna be something that we're at a position in the city of Tempe with what we're doing and how we're doing here and what we're achieving, it's time. Uh, we're a small city, but we're mighty, and here we are, we'll make that stand.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say also, thank you um, so much to um, everybody who is here and and really all of the representatives from both sides who have been so kind to take my goofy questions by email or by phone um, so that I could understand the prevailing wage and how that looks and how that affects um, our Tempe residents. I have a statement that I want to go ahead and read. Um, but again, I just want to say thank you so much for everybody who's taken the time to walk with me through this. And um, just want to say, um, thank you for everybody who's here um, to speak also. So I strongly support unions and I believe in fair wages for all. I believe skilled tradesmen and women are essential to our economy and building our infrastructure. And I also believe in being a good steward of taxpayer funds. I have a responsibility to ensure that city funds are managed carefully and are used wisely. Our community is one that invests in health and human services, education, community safety, community parks and safe streets. Tempeans can be proud to say we invest more in these areas than many other valley cities, and our quality of life is better for it. With every investment, we can measure return of value to our community's benefit. Fair wages and trades um, to tradesmen and women are important. It's also important that residents of Tempe are protected, and this is my first responsibility. In this particular case, obligating the city with this prevailing wage statute will guarantee two things. One, it will um, cost the city between five point nine million to seventeen point eight million over the next five years. Two, it will pull Tempe into an existing lawsuit that will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars and is unnecessary for us to be in. Those legal costs will be one hundred percent borne by the residents of Tempe and will directly result in cuts to capital improvement projects for water infrastructure, parks and street improvements. Again, I strongly support fair wages and I support our unions. In this particular case and at this particular time, I have too many concerns of the unknown risks. As a leader, I believe we need to mitigate the risks. The risks of an unknown cost in a lawsuit of our choosing are too great, especially at a time of financial uncertainty and the loss of twenty-one million in rental tax, rental sales revenues. It, and that affects our budget. I believe it's now time to be prudent. I will be voting no, not against the prevailing wage ordinance, but no to the unknown legal cost to our Tempe taxpayers. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else any comments, further comments? All right, seeing none, um, normally I would have tons of comments, but I think everything has been said this evening. So in the spirit of moving the meeting along, I think if we don't have anything else, we, I'm here to just call the question. Uh, so it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. Uh-oh, it's re- it's re- it's reloading. Hold on here, excuse me. Okay, try it again. Okay.
Yeah, yes, I'm voting yes.
Okay, so I hear, oh, there it is, um, Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
Okay, uh, and that vote therefore passes five to one, with Councilmember Garland voting no and Councilmember Chin absent. All right. Next up. Item number nine, current events, council announcements and future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. I will call on councilmembers for their comments and or requests to add an agenda item to a future meeting. This evening I'll be starting with Councilmember Keating.
Not another speech, come on.
Well, let me tell you, no, I just uh, wanna wish my brother a happy birthday on May sixteenth and my girlfriend a happy birthday on May seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Councilmember DeBarro?
You know, Mayor, I got one thing, and it was a shock to me come draft day. Well, not really a shock, but a local kid, Ricky Pierceall from Corona del Sol, got drafted in the first round for the San Francisco Forty-Niners and just thought that she'd be mentioned.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, thank you so much. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several announcements this evening. My first announcement is about our SEV committee meeting coming up. It will be on Friday, May seventeenth at one P M. right here in council chambers. And that is Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee. That's why I said SEV, it's much easier to say. Uh, we have two items on the agenda this month. We will be hearing all about Growing Together, our Community Tree Steward Program, Trees for Tempe. Did you get that, Jason? So, um, yeah, so I'm very excited about that. So we're, the city of Tempe has rolled out a new program um, on trees. So I really want anybody that's interested in trees to come on down or listen online. Um, we'll also give an update on economic, economic impact of special events here in Tempe. A virtual option is available, and the meeting will also be posted on Tempe's Channel Eleven page on YouTube after the meeting. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, hence the green ribbons that we have. Social worker is my background. Uh, I practiced for fourteen years at the city of Tempe, a master's level social worker and a licensed clinical social worker. So this is very near and dear to my heart. And I had got my masters from ASU, go Devils! And we will be hosting the B- And we will be hosting the Be Kind to Your Mind 5K Run/Walk at Kiwanis Park this Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So please consider coming out for the event. The event is free, but you have to register. So for more information, email care7@tempe.gov. That ends my announcements this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I don't have a slide, but I just want to say thank you so much to Tempe Constable Karen Latham. She allowed me to go on a ride along with her this morning. I wanted to see, I think in order for us to be sitting up here, it's really important for us to be seeing some of the things that happen in our city, and she is a constable and she was delivering eviction notices. And I think for me to be able to understand what it looks like and how we are trying to help people from being, keeping them from being evicted, or the services that we can offer people, I wanted to see what it was like on the, on her side. And I just wanted to say that it was, it was very eye-opening, it broke my heart a bit, but it, it's a necessary job that she, she does, and she does a great job at it, and she really does work really hard to offer services as she does it. It's a tough job, but she does it with compassion and with respect to the people, we, at least the three people that we met with today. So I just want to say thank you so much to all of our constables and the job that they do. It is, it's a necessary, very difficult job to do, but thank you for what you do. And the fact that we were sitting in the car and she said, I'll let you know if I need to give you a bulletproof vest to wear, just makes you realize the type of job that she has. So I just want to say thank you so much to our constables.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Oh, okay. On May 18th, we have Breakfast with Burdetta, and we have it with Keep Tempe Beautiful. So we're going to be at Tempe Town Lake from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So everybody who wants to come out and volunteer, come out, put some sunscreen on, and just come on out and put your hat on, let's get cleaning. Also, want to congratulate Mr. Waddell, he got Teacher of the Year. Me and Mayor Woods, we have a competition because we both speak every year, and I think I'm better at it than he is, but we'll just keep that to ourselves. But he is a phenomenal teacher and well-deserved, Mr. Waddell, I mean, just well-reserved. And I just want to, we had Tempe Salutes last, this Monday, this past Monday, and myself, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Garden were there to give out to our future kids who are coming into the military who's graduating from high school. It was a phenomenal event. I just want to give a special, special thank you to our, I call them our chiefs of staffs, but our council assistants, Sapan and Parrish. They did a phenomenal job of picking it up and running with it and putting it all together. And because our person who was over it, he's no longer with us, and you guys picked that ball up and you continue to run with it. So I just want to thank both of you guys from the dearest of my heart how that was the hard work, and thank you so much. And my last thing is, it's not only a thing, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be a police officer on Saturday. I'm excited. I'm going to be there from 1:00 to 9:00. I'm doing a full-time with the police department, so I'm riding with them. And also, it's a, it's a big competition because the following Saturday, I have, I'm going with the fire for 24 hours. Now, police feeds me well at a restaurant, but fire cooks for me. So I want to see what's going to happen with this right now, so I'm just giving that competition out there. Last year, fire beat y'all because they actually cooked me a good meal. So let's just see what happens with this 1:00 to 9:00 on, on Saturday. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hodge. To her point earlier, I cannot top that, so I will continue my trend this evening, foregoing my comments. And that will take me to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and move on to item number 11, which is adjournment. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for May 21st, 2024. We are adjourned. Have a great evening and a great weekend, everyone.